Ms. Fass?
Here.
Ms. Lewis is not present and Ms. Dufford is not present. Ms. Batani?
Here.
Ms. Wischnew?
Here.
Ms. Kana?
Here.
Vice Chair Santola?
Here.
Chairman Fernandez?
Here, thank you.
We have our quorum, we have our board attorney, our assistant township engineer, and our planner consultant.
Do you want to call the first matter before I just explain what's going to happen with it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that matter is a proposed new housing element and fair share plan and their related addendum which we were considering this evening.
Thank you. So, just a quick update, there will not be a hearing on this tonight, there will be some amendments that are going to be made to it. The purpose was to conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the master plan, which related to the master plan's housing element and fair share plan and spending plan, to bring it in compliance with the New Jersey Supreme Court's Mount Laurel decisions and the State's Fair Share Housing Act and all the amendments there too. But since there's some amendments that will have to be made, it will not be here tonight. The new date will be June 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and that is a Thursday, June 26.
Great, thank you. So, if anybody was here for that, it will not be taking place tonight, but it will be taking place on the 26th. There are some amendments that have to be made to it, and we will have the public hearing that evening. Okay, moving on to the next matter.
The next matter scheduled for this evening is a minor subdivision with variances for block 2100, lots 61, 62, and 63, 51, and 49, Overlook Road. That's application number 2025-11-M-S-U-B-V, Alta Asset Management LLC, located in the R3 zone.
Thank you and welcome. So, since we have some people in the audience and probably perhaps first timers, I just want to go through the general procedure for tonight's hearing, which is an application for a subdivision. The outcome can be an approval of the application as presented, approval with conditions, or denial of the approval, or denial of the application. We may need more sessions than tonight to meet, to get there. The applicant is represented by attorney who will explain the application. The applicant's attorney will also call one or more witnesses to give sworn testimony in support of the application. Members of the board may ask the witness questions. When the attorney for the applicant has no more questions for a witness, interested parties in favor of or in opposition to the application may ask questions of the witness about that witness's testimony. When all the applicant's witnesses have testified, if there is any entity or group formally appearing as a party in support of or in opposition to the application, that party may call witnesses. When all the witnesses of all parties have been heard, members of the public may give sworn statements for or against the application. When reaching its decision, the board may only consider sworn testimony and evidence introduced as part of the record. An applicant must always establish that the proposed development is consistent with the township-specific zoning ordinances that applies to the site that the applicant wishes to develop, and in addition to the site-specific ordinances, there are other provisions of the township ordinances that may be applicable. So, if the applicant must meet those requirements, and if for some requirements, the applicant may request waivers, deviations, or variances. For such requests, there are standards that must be met by the applicant before such relief can be granted. So, is there anybody here represented by an attorney? Not that, if you would like to make an appearance, that would be terrific.
Yes, Attorney Rose Murray Stone Dowerty with the law firm of A.Y. Strauss, here on behalf of Manasa Hookah, the owners of 42 Overlook Road.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Yes, it's Stone, S-T-O-N-E, Dowerty, D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y. And apologies to my client, because I know I mispronounced your name.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Again, Diana McGovern from the law firm of Gashone-Pamaco, on behalf of the applicant, Alta Asset. I'm here tonight representing a contract purchaser of 49 and 51 Overlook Road. We're here tonight for minor subdivision, creating three lots. Right now, on the tax map, there are three lots. We'd like to rearrange the line there and raise the existing two homes that are there and build upon the three, the proposed three new lots, three beautiful new single-family homes that will fit into that cul-de-sac area. The three tax lots include lot 61, and if I'm going to start on Overlook Road, going from front to back, the rear lot, which has to use an easement to access, that would be lot 61, and then, which is also 51 Overlook. Lots 62 and 63 make up the address of 49 Overlook Road. There's one home that straddles those lots, primarily on one lot versus another. And so, when I refer to lot, those lots, it'll, the first lot or lot 63, as you're going down the street, that has direct access onto Overlook Road. The other two lots, the middle lot that we're proposing and the back lot, utilize an easement for which we've supplied a copy of that easement that's in perpetuity for those two lots as an access easement. There's another home at the end of that lot, which I believe is, the address is 69 Overlook Road, and the owner of that, of the easement, is here also tonight. The homes, the side of the street where my client proposes to build the three new homes and to have the minor subdivision is in the R3 zone. Across the street is an R1 zone with an R2 overlay, and the homes on, the homes on all of the block with, with the exception of these older homes at the, at the end of the street, where the two of which are the houses that my client is a contract purchaser on, are large and beautiful and modern. And the proposal that we have for you tonight, we will create homes that will fit in with that neighborhood. So, the, we do need some bulk variances due to, while we have a lot of area physically with the lots that would be created due to the ordinance restrictions of lot area within the 150-foot ride of way, we require, we would require bulk variance for lot 63, proposed lot 63.01 or 02, depending upon how it's going to be configured, there is a question about that, how it would be designated, and my engineer will discuss that, because we have information that there was a prior subdivision that, that may require it to be .02, but, but that's the least of our, our issues. That lot, if created, would be 13,239 square feet. The second or middle lot would be 11,649.3 square feet. Again, physically, these lots are a lot larger than that, but because of your ordinance restriction. And the third or the rear lot fully complies with the square footage, but the bulk variance we require, we were requesting there is for a larger home, which would be in the area of, over, a little bit over 5,000 square feet, which, in the R1 zone, you're allowed up to 6,200 square feet, and you're, the homes across the street, and we'll go into that in more detail, are actually, some of them are actually in excess of that limitation. So, what we're proposing for the two lots that don't meet the square footage requirement, we're proposing a habitable floor area that is within that R3 zone requirement, and then the lot which, which is very large, we're, we're requesting that it be a larger home. Again, as I noted, a copy of the easement was provided to the board as well as photographs of the area. Tonight, I have two witnesses, Camille Wyszkowski, the managing member of Alta Asset Management, and Charles Baldanza. He is an expert witness who will wear three hats. He's an architect, he's an engineer, and he's also a licensed planner, so we get three for the price of one, sort of. So, as I noted, we are requesting minor subdivision approval for three lots, bulk variances for minimum lot area for two of the lots, for maximum habitable floor area for proposed lot 61.01, the rear lot, and two of the lots we require variances for, or one of the lots is for a front yard setback, because we go back further than the 60 feet allowed, and lack of road frontage on lots 62 and 61. It is our position, and we believe that the board will find that the proposed new houses are more in keeping with the neighborhood, which has large, beautiful, and modern homes. And so, with that, if I could call my first witness.
Just, I think before we begin, in the engineering review comments, one of them was that, you know, to discuss whether the existing lots fall within the merger doctrine, since the non-conforming lots are under the same ownership, and since the existing dwellings since within both of these parcels and the overall subject property, so, do you want to address that?
Sure, so the two lot, two, one lot is, they were two different owners. The one home is on, on the two tax lots, and yes, I would have to agree that they would have merged, and that if my client were to purchase it, it would be a merger, but then once we, if we were to be granted subdivision approval, as I understand it, then that creates the new lots, and they're, because they'd all be parceled off by subdivision, there, there wouldn't be the merger doctrine then, wouldn't apply. So, by, by operation of this board, technically, we may have two lots. I see what you're saying, they're, they're listed on the tax rolls as being three lots. You, we, we can accept that concept, that there is a merger of the two lots, where there is the one common, the one owner of those. The second lot, the back lot, is a separate ownership interest, so it's not all three that merge, it would just be the two. And then, once the, if the board were to grant the subdivision, that wouldn't be an issue, because by subdivision, merger wouldn't apply.
Yes, apologies, Mr. Chair, I just have a point of order question. I heard counsel indicate multiple times that their position is it's a minor subdivision. However, the notice says they're here for preliminary and major final subdivision, and counsel only listed five variances when their notice lists 12 variances. So, I just want to be clear what the board is hearing this evening as a matter of order. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll be hearing the full application as variances come up, we'll deal with them.
No, I understand, but her characterization is a minor, because a minor subdivision is not what she noticed for. She noticed for preliminary and final major subdivision, okay?
Richard, any problem with that? No? Okay. Okay, yes?
I know that there was another question as to whether we would, because it is a minor subdivision, we would request that it would be done by deed, as opposed to a plot.
Okay, you can call your first witness.
Thank you, I would like to call Camille Wyszkowski. Are you swearing?
Yes. Mr. Valerio Swierman.
You swear to testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, please give us your full name and spell your last name.
Camille Wyszkowski, spelled W-Y-R-Z-Y-K-O-W-S-K-I.
Camille, could you just confirm you are the contract purchaser of what, what parcels of property?
Yes, I am the contract purchaser for both 49 Overlook and 51 Overlook.
And what is your position with Alta Asset Management? Are you managing member?
Yes, I'm the owner and managing member.
Okay. What is currently on the two parcels, on the properties?
Sure, so on parcel 59 Overlook is a single-family home. That house was built in 1922, I believe.
This is 51 Overlook, you're talking?
Yeah, 51 Overlook, yep, sorry, yeah, 51 Overlook. Yeah, the house was built back in 1929 or so, and it's roughly about, I believe, like 2,000 square feet or so, right around there.
Okay, and?
And 49 Overlook's also a single-family home, also built right around, you know, 1929, also similar square footage.
And what do you propose to do?
My, my proposal is to demolish both homes and redevelop the property based on, you know, the, the allowance by the board.
Why, why tear them down and not just work with what's there?
So, 51 Overlook was built in 1922, and then the other one was built in 1929. As you can imagine, the homes are, you know, the foundations are almost 100 years old to support any sort of modern structure that's going to be rebuilt with larger loads would be pretty much impossible and just not conducive with modern building standards.
Okay, could you tell the board about the, I'm sure they're familiar with it, but the current neighborhood, what's across the street?
Sure, so, right closest to us is 42 Overlook, and that dwelling is right around 50, 5,828 square feet, and that's off the tax, tax property record. And the next door to that, going down Overlook is 40 Overlook. Based off the tax record, it's saying 8,374 square feet, although I, I, I think I disagree with that, I think perhaps they're counting the, a basement that must be above grade, because the, the roof coverage seems very similar to 42 Overlook, so I would estimate it's also probably in the mid 5,000 square footage, actual. And then, next door to that is 36 Overlook, and that's also right around, actually, 5,000 square feet even.
And that's in the R1 zone?
That's the R1 zone, that's the, to the left and across the cul-de-sac. And then, as we go on our side of Overlook, right next door, we have 43 Overlook. This house actually complies with the R3 zone at 3,337 square feet. And then, next door, we have 37 Overlook, also the R3 zone, but this house is 5,559 square feet, so this must have been some sort of a variance in the past, I have not looked into that.
Can you relate the size of the house to the size of the lot as you're going through?
Sure, sure. Do you want me to start over, or?
Or just give us, so the three homes that you mentioned?
Sure, yeah, so right now, right next door is 3,337 square feet, and the lot size is 19,880 square feet. Then over, we have 5,559 square feet, and the lot size is 24.
Can you repeat again?
Sure. I just mentioned 43 Overlook, which is next door, on the R3 side.
Do you have more copies of this?
I do not.
Okay.
So, 43 Overlook on our side is 3,337 square feet, and the lot size is 19,880 square feet.
Does, when it, you're reading off of the tax records, does that differentiate total square footage versus the zoning, zoning square footage that exempts out the 150-foot area?
Yes, this is total square footage.
Total square footage, so it's not, it's not putting that equation in with the 154, 150-foot?
I'm sorry? Uh, yes, this lot, 1631, 24, sorry, this is broken up here, 47, 70, about 86, 86 by 206, something around there. Wide, the frontage. The back is a little wider, it kind of pies out, but the frontage is approximately 86 or so.
It might be helpful if you could provide a chart with all of these figures in it, so it'd be easier for the board to have it in front of them.
We can do that, we can supply that. We're looking at, he's looking at the tax record, so we can, I can have copies made and forwarded to the board, sure.
Yeah, I could have that if I stepped to the computer and logged in on, on the internet. Should I do that? I'm sorry? Oh, it is? Okay, perfect.
We've got, okay, we have it on the site planner, right?
So, we have, we have it, Charlie's side.
Does that have the, the dimensions of the lots on that?
Okay, so, I'll just start over one more time. So, we're, I'm speaking about this lot right here.
And that is lot?
That is, yeah, 42 Overlook.
So, it's 42 Overlook, but it's six, lot 68.04?
.03.
.03? Okay.
The lot has a frontage width of 68.33 feet, and... Yes, it's triangular, correct. Yes.
So, is that the radius of the?
That's, that's this one right here. And then, this lot is 61.94 plus 68.33. And that lot is 25,264 square feet as a total square footage, and the building is 5,828 square feet.
And how much frontage?
Plus, where? No, no, that, that, the 61.94 belongs to the house, the lot next door.
Say that again?
The, the 61.94 belongs to lot 68.04.
Right, so the 68.33.
68.33 belongs to lot 68.03.
So, the 68.04 has the 68.33 on the left hand?
Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, got it, I apologize, yep. So, lot 68.04, which is the one next to that, that's 40 Overlook, and that lot is 27,704 square feet, and the building, the, the house is roughly about the same size as 42 Overlook.
What zones are they in?
For R1.
So, the two that you just gave us are in R1?
Correct.
Which are across the?
So, this is all R1, and this is all R2, R3.
R3.
What about your neighbors in the R3?
This one right here?
Go down the street.
Sure, so the neighbor next to us in the R3, the first neighbor, which is lot 64, right over here, their frontage is roughly around 86, 88, it's about 88, based on this calculate, but adding all these up. Their lot is 19,880 square feet, and the house is 3,337 square feet. The lot next to that, which is lot 65, and it's 37 Overlook, also the R3 zone, the lot size is 24,441 square feet, and the dwelling is 5,559 square feet.
And the frontage?
The frontage on that is, approximately 150 feet. Slightly more, maybe 155. It would be 32.18 plus 56.74 plus 71.
All right, so we've gone down, two, two houses now, Pat?
Correct, and then the last one, which is lot 67, which is 35 Overlook, the lot, I did not scale this, but the lot, actually, the square footage here is incorrect on this, on the, on the tax map here, I'd have to add this up, but it's approx, I would, let me, let me, sorry, let me just do this calculation. It's approximately 27,000 square feet, and the building's square footage is 4,188 square feet.
Okay, so?
And the, and the frontage is 100 feet.
Now, compare them to what we're proposing, in terms of what is our lot frontage on the, the three lots? If you can, I mean, I don't know if you got the information right there.
So, we are proposing lot 61 to be at 35,392 square feet. Lot 6201. Lot 6201 to be...
Is the frontage as well?
Yes, uh, the frontage on that one is going to be 81 feet. Um, lot 62.01, we're proposing at 21,288 square feet with a frontage of...
58.13?
No, plus 14.31. 58.13 plus 14.31 plus 5.36, 77.8 feet.
It's not consistent with what the plan that we were presented has for that, though, it says 58 square feet, or 58 lineal feet for the frontage, is that wrong?
No.
There's a curve, though, which, there's a curve that adds the other 14 feet and 5 feet.
Well, shouldn't that be reflected on the plan we're looking at?
I think it is.
Where?
I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I mean, it, you have to add it up, but, um, the map I'm looking at shows those numbers.
I'm just looking at the chart, the zoning chart.
Yeah, and for, the zoning chart does not include a lot width or a lot frontage calculation.
That's the front yard.
Yeah, it's a setback, yeah.
And lot 63.02, we're proposing at 16,911 square feet with a frontage... I'm sorry, Charlie, I can't, I, I can't seem to see the frontage on this one.
We can fill it in with our engineer, and I think the board will, will have to kind of, I think, summarize this in a chart and submit that, um, to help the board. But, but let's talk about, um, in terms of, of the house sizes on the first two lots, they're within the R3 zone requirement, correct? In terms of the, the sizes of the houses?
That we're proposing?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
It's just the, the larger lot in the back that, that you can't really see from the street, because that's the one that uses the, specifically uses that easement area. That's the larger home that you're proposing? Um, the square footage of that, I think, is 5,031 square feet. That is actually less than the other houses on the other side of the street, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so let's talk about the, the anticipated proposed houses in terms of how many bedrooms that would be in, in each of them?
Sure, the ones that would be within the R3, um, uh, zone compliance, um, the houses, the, the houses would have, um, on the first floor, an open concept with a family room, kitchen and breakfast area. We would also have a first-floor formal dining room and a home office for the, uh, work-from-home family, in addition to an in-law suite. Um, on the second floor, we would propose four bedrooms, three bathrooms and a laundry room. And then a full-finished basement with a gym, open entertainment area, and an additional guest room.
And the, uh, the larger home in the back?
Sure, that larger home on the first floor would also have an open-concept family kitchen and breakfast area. It would have a full in-law suite with a full bathroom, an office for the work-from-home family member, and a formal dining room. On the second floor, it would have five bedrooms and five bathrooms, a laundry room. And then in the basement, we would have a, also fully-finished basement with a gym, a theater room, a large entertainment area with an additional guest bedroom ensuite.
Now, um, I know you gave me, in terms of a description, the use of materials and how you would integrate with the neighborhood.
Sure, um, because the neighborhood is mostly composed of stucco facades, we would keep that to, in line with the neighborhood to make sure that it matches the feel of overlook and Bel Air Woods in that area. Um, I've done a number of projects in Livingston, and, you know, we typically use hardy board, uh, because that's the typical, uh, you know, Center Hall Colonial and some of the other areas. But in this particular area, we'd really want to use a lot of the materials that would fit the surrounding homes.
Um, do we have any renderings as an example to show the board?
Yes, we did a rendering of the larger home, just as an example of what we're thinking.
Is that what I have here?
Yes, and I have copies for everybody.
Would it be all right if we could hand them up to the board, Mr. Chairman?
You know, we're not, we're not here to approve the house, or houses.
Oh, I understand that, I didn't know whether the board wanted the look of it.
I don't think we need to go down this road.
Okay, very good.
I just have one question before we do that. Does an in-law suite mean it has a kitchen or?
No, no kitchen, just a bedroom with a bathroom in case, uh, somebody is staying over.
No, no.
Or in case you have a hip replacement and you have to sleep on the first floor, because we've had that in my house. Is that, that would be a, a useful for somebody who can't do steps.
Sort of bizarre question. If this was all an R1 zone, would there be any variances required for the subdivision?
If it was all an R1 zone, I think we still wouldn't meet the, um, the square footage, because, uh, we have very large lots, but because of the way your ordinance is configured, if you're 150, you can't count the square footage, that's 150 feet within the right-of-way.
So you would violate the right-of-way, and you would need a variance for that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're, they're narrow and deep.
Instead of frontage, it's 150 feet.
They're large lots, but they don't comply because of the way that they're configured. So, um, yeah, I, that would be one of the, that would be still an issue.
Well, the existing configuration complies, correct?
Um...
No.
Well, the, the existing homes, you mean?
The existing lots, do, do they meet the lot area requirements?
Hmm, I think the one, the, the first one is undersized, so that's why we're going to move the lot line, the lot...
Yeah, well, if they're merged, I'm saying if they're merged.
If they're merged, yes, then we'd have two lots that would be...
So we have two conforming lots.
Yes, that would be in conformance. Yes, so if we had two lots, then you have two very large lots with a requirement that you have a small house. You know, if we, it's just, it's, because it's an R3, it's, it's kind of a funny configuration, because all of those houses on that block are also big. But the ordinance requires them to be smaller, um, but yet they don't, that's the way it is.
Which is why I asked if it was in the R1.
If we had the two big lots in the R1, if it was R1, but it's not, so, yeah, that's the problem.
Are we better off, instead of creating a, a conditional use or a variance, having, looking, recommend that the zone for that be changed to be commensurate with the other houses that are in that immediate area, and instead of doing what we're doing, make them conforming and be done?
But that only deals with the habitable area, right, it's still going to have a subdivision.
Wait, the subdivision would be the easy part, because they would then be conforming. They would then be conforming lots.
Yeah, but to...
Now they're not, and it's, 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 it's apples and oranges in, in, in a given area.
But Rich, it's not going to be compliant in R1. And so it's not going to be compliant R3.
That would still be a problem, then, that, even in an R1, you would not be compliant with the setback from the...
We, I think we still wouldn't be compliant because of the setback that we have on the, um, the back lot, because it's got to be within 60 feet of the, of the front of the street.
Please assume, though, that those lots are merged, so you're, you're working with two lots now.
We're working with two lots, okay, I understand that, so we're looking at, create three lots out of two lots. I, I understand what the board is saying. Would you be doing the development and construction of the new homes?
Yes.
All right, and you would understand that, so, so what, within the confines, if we were to do anything differently, we would have to come back to the board for, for variance relief, you understand that?
Yes.
Now, we, we, the deed for lot 61 shows that it would continue the easement, the access easement, because that's another variance we require, because of the way that these lots are positioned. We need the access easement for it, specifically for the ba, back lot and for the middle lot, and we, we do have an agreement that that, in the easement, that that will continue, correct?
Correct.
Now, the proposed homes, would they all comply with the habitable floor area ratio required?
Yes, they would. Yes, in fact, um, the maximal, maximum on lot 61, based on HFAR, is 7,432 square feet because of the size of that lot.
Okay.
And then the R3 that we're proposing on 62 is maximum, based on HFAR, is 4,470 square feet, because that's also a very large lot.
Okay, so I know that this board is concerned about, like, large McMansions exceeding the HFAR, and we're in no danger of getting even near that, correct? With what we're proposing?
Correct.
Okay, um, is there anything else that I think that we should tell the board at this point with your testimony, or? I, I know that the other attorney would like to probably have some questions, so, um, and the board...
I have a question for our planning consultant. So the lot 61, which is the larger lot, which is setback?
Yes.
It's using the easement for access.
It is.
So it's absolutely not visible, going to be visible from the street, is that acceptable, as per our ordinance?
I, I mean, there, it is acceptable, and it has functioned that way, but we would recommend some type of signage to let people know that homes are situated back there, along the curve of the, that cul-de-sac. Because that looks just like, you know, we don't know, i- if you pull up to that driveway, essentially, you don't know what's back there, how many homes are there?
Thank you.
Andrew, I have a, a question.
Yes.
If, assuming this board approved the subdivision, and again, we are not approving the houses.
Right.
Regardless of the size that they're showing that would fit. And they came back to build these, they would end up having to get a variance for the 5,000-square-foot house, because it, it's, it's above the square footage that's allowed. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
But isn't the 5,000-square-foot house in the R1?
No.
No, no.
It's, it's right next to it, it's across the easement.
Got it.
It's 20 foot from it, but it doesn't count.
Yeah, I think, I, I think...
But, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think the core question we're asking here is, we have, currently, we have two conforming lots for the district. They're asking to subdivide this into three lots and to then build larger homes on the three lots, which will now be smaller than they are today. The question is, you know, i- is it, does it make planning sense to subdivide something into smaller lots? These will be amongst the smaller lots in frontage on, on overlook. So I think that's what the board has to weigh, is how does this fit into the neighborhood character? That we, we, they're making a case that this is the neighborhood character, it's larger homes, but these lots are smaller. I mean, today, they can fit, they conform, and if you look at it from an aerial perspective, the homes are set very much like the existing community. Would this be a better alternative to just put two new houses on reconfigured lots, on two lots, or, or are the three lots warranted?
We are here for variance for the house sizes.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying what, what you have to provide support for.
Okay, I understand. That's a different application for us to go with two, two large lots, but we want larger houses, so...
We're not approving the size of the houses. That's not what we're here to do, it's a subdivision, and that's the only thing that we're opining on here today.
Yes, we noticed for variances.
Okay, that was in the, okay.
They did, they did notice for the variance for the size of the house, too.
Yes, yes.
I didn't see that notice, but...
Yeah, I haven't seen the notice either.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but I understand.
They're listed on the schedule for the zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we published and we served notice on all the neighbors for size, okay, just, uh...
So I have a question for you. Let me first understand, uh, am I, what am I making statement is correct? So what I'm seeing here in that picture that you have on the screen, I'm zooming in, uh, and I know we are talking mostly about subdivision right now. But the proposed building footprint, I'm, I'm seeing 1690 for one, 1760 for another, 2310 for next. Is that a correct reading, first of all?
For the lot sizes you're talking about?
For the three, for the three homes.
Yes, that's the, that, that's the building coverage.
Footprint, that's a footprint.
Footprint, correct.
So it's going to go up, and the proposal is something, somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000, 4,000 square feet homes.
Two of the homes are within the R3 requirement of 3,000, approximately 3,520 square feet, they're within that, that requirement.
So the question I have is, um, and I've made a trip to the neighborhood, I'm sure everybody else has, I'm going to go back to your statement, it conforms with the neighborhood. In what sense? Because you just self, you just said yourself, the homes there are 5,000 and above, rest of the sizes. I'm just trying to understand, are we creating, to Mr. Diner's point there?
Architecturally?
Yeah, are we, are we sort of creating?
Modern, looking, this is what I'm suggesting.
But that's, that's your, your way of describing, right?
Aesthetically, it's, it's better.
It's different.
Yeah.
It's different.
I'm, I'm assuming there's going to be testimony on, you know, how the lot sizes conform with the overall neighborhood?
From the engineer and the plan.
Correct, okay, that's what I assumed.
Yes.
And, and your planner should address why three lots are a better alternative than to raising these two homes and just building two new homes on two lots?
I, I keep, I keep hearing that, but you see, if my client were to come back...
No, no, we're not asking to come back, you have to make a case as to why this is a better zoning alternative.
I understand, but what I'm not getting is a feeling from the board, if we are to stick with, we're going to have these then two, if you're, if we're getting two really large lots and having to build the R3-sized house, that also, um, we would want to move the lot lines and make them a little bit more manageable, I, I even them out as best we can, because they're kind of oddly, oddly configured.
I understand that.
But if, if, I mean, if, if I'm hearing this, we, I can discuss it with my client to have bigger homes, but again, we'd need a variance, so, um, we're trying to keep within the R3 zone, because that's what we're required to have. So in terms of if the size of the homes that we're proposing are too small...
But, I, I think, the issue is you're creating undersized lots of the zone.
I think the board is less concerned with the, how, you know, how sizes versus the, the lots and how they conform with the neighborhood.
Understood.
I, I think that's what I'm getting from, from the questions.
I don't know whether I can ask for, like, some advisory, we would be open to creating two, just having two larger lots with an application for larger homes, say, in that R1-type-size home, but I don't know if that's a better configuration, we can, I can discuss it.
Yeah, I don't know if we can give an advisory opinion.
Well, I think the question for Andy, if they merged a lot with two smaller lots.
Right.
Now they have two conforming lots.
Correct.
They don't need anything from us.
Yes.
Does he have a variance for the size of the house?
No, no, but we don't have, at that point, do we lose our, that's my question, do we lose our jurisdiction to give the McMansion if they're not here for subdivision?
No, no, the mansion would have, anything over 3,500 square foot?
Yeah, but that's a zoning board application.
No, I understand.
No, no, it's still, it's still planning.
But we'd, we'd be moving the lot line somewhere.
Because it's not, it's not FAR.
But it's only, it's only here because of the subdivision. The zoning board here is every McMansion, we've never granted, I can't remember, 25 years, granting a McMansion ordinance variance here unless it's connected to a subdivision.
Although, I, I'm...
I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just trying to make sure we have jurisdiction.
I'm, I'm also assuming they'd want to adjust lot lines.
Okay, then we can, yeah, good.
They still want to adjust the lot lines for the two conform, yeah, because the, the two smaller lots are some, even though they're conforming, they're somewhat of an awkward configuration, probably square those all.
I just didn't want to go through the whole process and then...
No, I don't think they have to.
That means jurisdictional.
Right.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I can discuss this, we, if we...
You want to take five minutes?
Yeah.
Could we?
Richard, can I, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
When I first came upon these properties, truthfully, I thought they were R1. I later found out that they were R3. I met with, you know...
I met with, you know, Jackie, just to kind of get an opinion on what's going on, how this could be perceived, and to my knowledge, its cluster rezoning is not necessarily acceptable. So therefore, I took upon myself to be compliant with the ordinance of an R3 and have, try to do the best I can with it being R3. My initial gut feeling was that it was R1. I wanted to initially put up an R1-style home to fit Bel Air Woods, and I'm still open to that, but it doesn't, you know, to put a 3,520-square-foot home on a 40,000-square-foot lot, I mean, that's just, it's gonna, it's not going to fit that, that neighborhood any better than three homes that are closer to the street that are 3,520 and then 5,500 square feet. So I'm, you know, I'm, my goal is to make everybody happy, you know, I want the neighbors to be happy, I want the town to be happy, and I want the new development to look really nice. So, yes, I'm, I'm.
Quick question first. So let's say you and your counsel decide to abolish the lot line, make two lots that are R1 conforming, and then seek McMansion variances from each, for each lot, right? You're one, on the right-hand side, you're good with, you know what you want, what you're asking for. You don't really have a house designed for the left-hand side, so do you have an idea of what variance you'd want to ask for, or you're going to?
Yes, they would, they would only be C variances for habitable floor area.
No, no, but.
Would you meet the front yard setback? Would you meet height?
Yes, I would meet.
Well, but how big would the house be? What would be the variance we're going to give you? Like, how many square feet?
Yes, the houses would be approximately 5,500 square feet to match the surrounding neighborhood.
Right, because you would need max square footage variances and habitable floor ratio.
Not ratio.
No, on the, oh, on the two, you'd be okay. Right, it would just be max square footage.
The ratios would still be compliant under 21 percent. They would be around 14 percent, and the allowable is 21.
And that's really where you get to McMansions, in my opinion, when you're up over the habitable floor area ratio.
Right, it's not a ratio, it's not a ratio.
So we're in proportion to the lot, it's just, we're just not allowed to have that many square feet. And, and that, when he bought the property, it said three tax lots, so that's where the design.
I didn't buy it, but.
Or when he contracted to buy the property. It was with the understanding that there were three tax lots, so this is, this was the concept, so that's why we're here. But we're willing, I mean, if the board is, would like to see that too, or yes, instead of, we can come back with that.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're hearing from the board is it's more of a concern on lot size and frontage and not necessarily house size, because that will probably comply with, you know, the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
We, we don't want to lose our spot here, though, so could we have it adjourned?
Well, one last, but.
You know how that goes?
I think what you want to do, too, is get the tax map and show the other square footages in the neighborhood, so that, I think that's part of the test, that it's incompliant, even though your argument is you're an R1 lot in an R3 zone, right?
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that convince us that the other lots around you have the same-sized houses, those big, beautiful, modern houses you talked about.
They're across the street.
Right, no, I know, exactly.
But even the house next to him.
I'm talking about it for an exhibit.
No, I, yeah, we have.
Yeah, Steve's right. I mean, neighborhood character is going to play into this, and if you fit in better, yeah.
And that's exactly what would fit.
Right.
Yeah. The other thing to think about is if you do come back with two lots and if you decide that way, if you look at the site plan right now, there's a very steep driveway going up to the first lot. It's over 10 percent slope. That eliminates that, and essentially, you could follow the existing driveway.
That would, then we wouldn't have a steep slope variance issue. Okay, that's actually a very good point.
And you'd remove some of the retaining walls.
Okay.
I think that's a concern for your neighbors, too, like, three homes versus.
I, I have talked to counsel, so I, we're, could we have an adjournment?
So, so, what? What, and, yeah, just, what do we have, what's available? Don't, why are you making a face at me? I'll go to the council, any questions or anything that you'd like to say right now at the moment?
There's no questions. I've spoken to counsel. My clients did not want three lots. Obviously, we'll have to see with the lot line.
Right, we're not asking for any commitments right now.
But I also provided our availability and our planner, so we will be looking at, especially for the revised plans, nothing sooner than probably mid-July is my understanding.
So. So July 1st won't work, we've already committed to another application that we can't put off, probably will not finish that day.
Okay.
The next one is the 17th, but we can kind of fit you in instead of, I'm sorry, the 15th.
You're good with that? Is that your favorite?
I am, I can't promise the planner, but I will do my best.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a good asset.
She wants to say something.
I just, is this on?
Sure.
I just want to say, I'm at 59 Overlook Road, and I have a very long driveway that was deeded to me, and I had to give permission for the folks that live at 51 to use my driveway to get up to their house. But I don't want this driveway to be abused and covered with trucks and materials and people that are working, building the houses, therefore preventing me from going down, up and down to my house, and preventing any emergency equipment to come to me. I've lived there for over 60 years, and my house is nothing like the houses you're talking about. It's an old redwood ranch house, and it's fabulous, and I live above a brook and surrounded by woods, and I want to stay there and I want to have my privacy, but I just don't want that driveway to be abused.
It's, yeah, it's certainly a valid concern, and we can make sure that we can, you know, protect that as best we can.
Okay.
It's a good point. So on, on the 15th, how much time do you think you'll need, just?
Charlie, can you, do you think you, on 15th, can we?
We can do it.
Yeah, we can do it.
So I'm trying, we like to make, try and schedule the other application for, you know, if you're not going to take up the whole time on the 15th.
Assuming it's a really good application, it won't take a long time.
We will need plans 10 days prior.
Understood. Yeah, we, we can.
Why don't we just, why don't we put it down for the 15th, and Jackie?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm Priti Maita, I live at 3 Bonneview Drive in Livingston, born and raised in Livingston. I was listening to your plans for this development and how they're going to be beautiful homes for different generations to live under one roof, and that's great. And I live with two elderly parents, so I understand the need for a place for them to be if there's a hip surgery, whatnot. Does the town have the proper resources to serve such big homes with schools and senior services?
Again, that's really not a subject for the planning board.
Oh, no, but it's just something that I want to raise as, if we do approve such a thing.
Right, that's not a subject, yeah, for the.
I know, but like.
We have, fortunately, we have a member of the governing body on our, you know, on our DA's.
I live in town, too, so I guess I got a say.
So, and I can assure you, that's something that they're thinking about all the time. So it's something that's on the radar screen, so it's something that they're thinking about all, you know, about, you know, providing, you know, making sure that, you know, services are provided to the residents of the town. So I can, I can assure you that, that's what Councilman Toney is thinking about all the time, as well as his colleagues.
Okay, I live in town, though, so I guess I do have a say.
So do we.
So, you know, just had to say it. Thank you.
That's okay, thank you.
One of the, we did three homes, you'd be more likely to have more services if it's needed rather than two large ones.
Right, and I second Mr. Chairman's point there, Priti, Ms. Maita, is that town is always thinking about it, this is, this is the homes we are talking about in the same neighborhood. So, so yes, absolutely the case that town is thinking about its governing body, so.
Okay, well, it's once the precedent is set, you know, other things follow.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
Just for the record, I have two requests. One is, is that council actually provide my office with a copy of the revised plans as well. I didn't get copied on the renotice, so I would appreciate getting a copy of the plans so I can have those as well to review with my client. And secondly, we anticipate if our issues are not resolved and we are still objecting, that we will need at least 40 minutes for our professionals to testify, and I will do my best to see if my professionals are available on the 15th, as they're not here with us tonight because they had a conflict. I cannot commit to that on the record, I just wanted to be clear with that.
For some reason, I have a feeling that the two of you are going to work this out.
We hope so.
I don't know why, but I just do.
Okay, thank you.
And we will send everything, I will make sure everything gets sent to council.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Diner?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.